I'm going to call this meeting to order. Ryan, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to number two, adoption of the agenda.
Madam President, I'd move to adopt the agenda as submitted. However, we'd like to change two of the items, which would be item number 10, the superintendent's report, and item number 10, the board reports and board members' comments, up to agenda items three and four.
Second?
I'll second it, but you said item number 10 twice. The superintendent's report is item number nine.
Did I? Okay. Well, that should be nine and 10.
Second by Laurel. Second by Laurel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing so, we will move on to number nine. Mr. Stokes, superintendent report.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I'd like to just welcome our two new members and appreciate your community service and look forward to getting to know you and working with you throughout the time that you have on the board. I'd like to begin, we have several student groups here this evening that we'd like to recognize along with their advisors. I'd like to first invite Mr. Joe Tierney, who is the coach for the Carson Middle School eighth grade boys' basketball team. These young men achieved the status of the Tauniva champions, and we'd like to have Mr. Tierney come forward, please.
And parents, if you want to come behind us to get pictures of their faces and knock the back of their head, feel free.
Coach, if you could just introduce your players and tell us a little bit about your season, the end result, and any other highlights that you can think of.
You bet. This year, we ended up 15-0 and had a great run. We're actually in the midst of practicing. We had our last official practice today because we're going to go up to the Optimist Tournament up in South Lake Tahoe this weekend, so it's kind of out of the Tauniva league, but I think we're going to give it a good run. We have a good club. It's my second year. Last year, we went undefeated as well. These kids are pretty darn good, though. They're of great attitude, showed up to practice every day, they gelled together. It was just a phenomenal team effort. Many MVPs, and I guess I'll just call them up one by one right now. Blake Menzel, come on up. Deepak. Christian Ortega. Josh Buckham. Colton Shaver. Hayden Hudson. Cale Good. Gavin McIntosh. Lucas Van Brouw is sick today, and then Jordan Torres. I could only vote for one honorable mention, and first team, actually, and Jordan Torres was my choice. He was my point guard all year, but we're still in it. We're having a good time and a good group of kids. They're heading up to the high school next year, so Carson High is fortunate to have them.
Thank you, Coach. Thank you, Coach. It's a good thing you guys are going up next year. We need the help. Looking for strength. One thing, when you go up, the only thing you ever have to remember? Beat Douglas. I don't care if you lose in every other game, beat Douglas.
We took care of them three, three wins to zero losses, CVMS and Paul Wallace. That's a blend, and we're just one, so you got it.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations. Good luck this weekend.
Madam President, members of the board, I'd like to continue with my report. I'd like to invite Carol Harris to come forward. Mrs. Harris has been assisting the district in a variety of capacities and, most recently, in affiliation with our GATE program. So Carol Harris, please.
I have brought several members of the community that is a representative of, I would say, about 15 engineers, pilots, all kinds of things in the aeronautical industry. Why don't you introduce yourselves and tell us what you do?
Well, I'm Barry Matson, and I work at Clickbond here in Carson City. I was raised here, probably since I was 1965. I've gone through all the great schools here, Fritsch, Carson High Middle School, and then graduated from UNR. And I've worked in a few, a couple of other companies previous to working for Clickbond. So for about the last, it's been about the last 10 years I've been with them, well, 14 years now, so.
Guy?
I'm Guy Williams. I am the chairman of the Carson City Airport Authority and had worked with Carol and the folks at Clickbond and a very talented group of students to put together the aeronautical program to use aviation as a basis for STEM education and an inspiration for kids to pursue that field. I, unlike others, am a transplant from the East Coast. I came here to retire, somehow got very involved in a lot of things. It's funny how that happens. And I'm very happy to have had the opportunity to work with Carol and the other folks on the school board to put together the program that I think will maybe get us more science, scientists, engineers, and pilots in the future. Thank you.
Leah?
I'm Leah Oaks. I am a mechanical engineer for Clickbond. I graduated from UNR in 2013. I enjoy being a part of this program as a student pilot myself. My husband, Sutimak, there is a STEM educator as well, so it's been a really great contribution to the community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I just wanted to tell you a little bit about this. This is, for 10 years, we've had the exploration program, and this is a program for our gifted kids, our brightest kids in the Carson City School District. And we have had, I tried to develop this with community partners. So Clickbond and the Airport Authority stepped up to the plate. And so we have so many diverse careers within the field of aviation. And so I contacted Guy. He was our first person that we met at a roundtable at Clickbond, and we had all different types of people there, plus educators. And we said, "We don't think our kids really know about the field of aeronautical engineering. What can we do?" So Guy put together this wonderful program. And so we decided to start with our eighth grade GATE kids. And for four years, we've been taking the kids to the Clickbond hangar. So they're sitting in this huge hangar with jets and all different kinds of planes that they get to get into. They get to talk to Charlie and Colly Hutter, who are the president and CEO of Clickbond, and they learn about aviation. We start off with the history of aviation. And I don't think Doug Thorngren could make it, but he has a wonderful hangar that has many different types of aviation, from planes that were used in World War I to World War II. He has gliders, he has all different types of planes. And so the kids got to look at these planes and see, what has aviation done from the beginning of aviation to now? And then, where are we going to take it? And so then they started talking about drones. Oh, my gosh, that was, that was interesting. So we looked at the history, then we put them into small groups, we gave them challenges, they became engineers, and they had to design various planes, and they competed with each other. Then we learned about the education. What kind of classes should they be taking when they reach the high school? What schools are good for an aeronautical engineering degree? And it's not just an aeronautical engineering degree. We have mechanical engineers, we have all different types of engineers. Plus, we have mechanics, we have firefighters, we have nurses that are going to Mexico that have learned how to fly, and they go down there. So the field is huge. And so what we've done is hopefully show the passion of these engineers to the kids. And maybe we will have some more engineers coming out of this. In fact, one day, Charlie Hutter passed out his business card and said, "You come back and you apply for a job with me." And Leah, when we first started, the one young lady in eighth grade, eighth grade GATE girl, got up to the group and said, "I want to thank all of you, but I noticed there's only men here. When are you going to get women? Maybe it's going to be me." I mean, that was impressive. And then the next year, I saw Leah there. So I want to thank all of you, and I have the teachers that I bring with me, they put this together. And it is a beautiful collage of the pictures of the engineers and the kids. And so I'm going to present this to them. And I especially want to thank Colly and Charlie Hutter, because they have, not only did they educate the kids' mind, they also bought them pizza every single time. So the kids love that. So thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? No? Thank you, Carol. You've done such a great job of getting the community involved ever since you took over the GATE program. So way before we started getting the community, so we appreciate that.
I didn't take it over. Valerie is in charge of the GATE program.
But you're part of it.
But I'm the worker bee.
Yep. Ron has something.
No. Carol, and I also want to thank you. I was, I think, on the first.
You were there.
Yeah. And it was, it was great what you did, what Guy and what the representatives from Clickbond. It was unbelievable, and I had the opportunity to ride the bus with the kids, to talk to them, going and coming. And this, it changed the mindset of a lot of these kids. They had no idea what the field of aviation really was all about. And a lot of them then changed their direction, you know, going forward. So you did, I think you did a great job. You've done a great job, and I hope you continue.
All right. And we have many other community partners. So I think I'm going to drop off a sheet that shows all the community partners that we have utilized in the GATE program, because it extends from many different fields. All right? Thank you very much.
Madam President, members of the board, next I would like to make mention, and I don't, I don't think it takes a lot of additional words from me, but our Carson High School Senator Football Team had an extraordinary year. Very proud of the coaching staff and the young men who represented us so well during this season. And we would like to invite Coach Blair Roman forward. As you probably saw in the newspaper, Coach Roman was named the Sierra League Coach of the Year, and very proud of him for his accomplishments. And he's here to introduce some of his players and talk maybe a little bit about some of the highlights of this season. Thanks, Coach, for being here.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for inviting us again. It's the fourth year that we've been invited to come, which I think indicates a little bit of success that we've had, at least in terms of having some good seasons there. But we even have a board member who's a former player of mine, almost 20 years ago now, Mr. Green. So all the board members, it's great to see again, and some of you that are new, like Ryan, it's good to see everybody here tonight, and I'd like to thank you again for inviting us. It was a fantastic year, a little bit of a heartbreaking end to the season, to be honest with you. But, you know, I really would kind of like to brag a little bit about some of the, not only on-field exploits but off-field exploits of our players this year. First of all, in terms of our on-field success, we were literally, I don't know how to really explain it, probably a few feet away from maybe playing for a state title this year. That was the second time where we've been able to play in a state semifinal game, and this year was a year where we were almost able to earn the right to represent Carson City as state football championship game. So that was really, really a neat experience. You know, and in terms of, you know, on the field, I'm going to introduce some of our players. I've invited a few of our seniors who were award recipients this year for their exploits on the field. Also, we have a couple of other players in attendance here today. And I also have another player that I'd like to introduce, who will be back next year. So the other person, another guest that I brought with me, actually, is one of my assistant coaches. And as Mr. Stokes said, I was honored with Coach of the Year. And it's interesting, because I think that award is really an indication of you've had a good season, you know? And, you know, it's no different than being a top-level school administrator or other people. You need good people around you to be successful, and I've got excellent assistant coaches, and I've invited one here today to kind of talk to the board about a program that he heads up for me, excuse me, with the, with the football team. So real quick, if I could invite some of these seniors up here real quick. Tristan, come on up, too. We've got a few boys who have basketball game, a couple that have basketball game tonight, one who wasn't able to come at the last second, who is here, going to be here tonight as well. But I'd like to introduce, first of all, Gerardo Lobato right here. Gerardo was a second-team All-League linebacker for us. He was the rock of our, middle of our defense this year, and just has had a tremendous high school experience, I think, in terms of his future for the rest of his senior year, moving on from Carson High. The other young man I have right next to him, this is Jesse Medina. Jesse was also a second-team All-League performer this year as a defensive lineman. And Jesse, as well, has had an outstanding career for the Senators over the last four years and been a big part of our program. A couple other award recipients, to my direct left here, this is my lone junior that's up here, and I had invited another junior to be here, too. Tristan Martel was recognized as Academic All-State this year. That means a student athlete who's achieved a 4.0 GPA in the classroom, is able to juggle the commitments of academics, he's got a heavy course load with athletics. So it's kind of, I think, a really important accomplishment to recognize. It's something that I recognize at our banquet every year as well. So Tristan was Academic All-State, along with another junior named Max Damar, and both of those boys will be returning next year. Over here to my left, far left first, is our co-offensive Player of the Year from Carson High School this year, is Colby Brown. He played running back for us, had a tremendous senior season. Colby carries a GPA of, I believe, around 3.5. He's looking to maybe go on and try to play at the next level, and because he's earned good grades in that area, those kind of opportunities can open up for young men if they choose to maybe try to follow that path. So we're looking to see if we can find a good place for Colby to land after high school. And then next to Colby on his right, this is Nolan Shine. Nolan was our, was the Defensive Player of the Year in our league, and in my opinion, was the Defensive Player of the Year in the entire region up here in the north. And he's not the biggest guy in the world, but one of the most dynamic players I've been able to coach over the years, for sure, on the defensive side of the ball, at least. So all four of these young men had tremendous senior season. They were key leaders for us. There was other kids who weren't able to come tonight. I'd like to quickly mention them. All-region performer on defense for us was Brady Rivera. He's also on the wrestling team right now, along with Nolan. We've got Dylan Rooker, who's playing basketball game tonight. Dylan was first-team All-League receiver, first-team All-League defensive back, two-way performer, which is quite an accomplishment in the stand age. And then the other person I want to mention is a junior named Asa Carter. Asa had a, had a basketball game tonight. He was the most outstanding player of the area and was one of the top performers in the area as a junior. We're excited to have him back next year. The last thing I'd like to mention real quick before I hand this over and introduce one of my assistant coaches is, our team GPA this year was 3.28, which is pretty good, when you consider we have 52 kids on our team. And, you know, the time commitment that they spend with the sports of extracurricular along with, not only football, but a lot of these guys are two and three sport athletes, too, which I think is very commendable. So overall, I was very, very pleased to see the efforts academically. Always been a big believer that if a kid can give me a great effort in the classroom, not everyone's a 4.0 student, but that type of effort will translate into the sport that you choose to play. So I think that was a neat accomplishment by the team. The last thing I'd like to kind of mention, this is the first year in seven years where, at our grade check at the nine weeks, for eligibility at our school, we did not have one JV or varsity player who was failing a class, and I was very proud of that. Overall, you're talking 90 kids. Thank you. And I, I would like to kind of brag up the graduation rate of our team, pretty good. I'm kidding. But yeah, it's, it's been an excellent group of young men to work with. We're excited about the future. We have an excellent group of young kids coming up that were freshmen. Our sophomore team was undefeated this year. We have an excellent junior class coming back next year. So, you know, we're, we're very excited about the future and the contribution we make to the high school, for sure. Okay? It's great being just part of that whole team. It's tremendous. Okay? So my last guest that I'd like to introduce is Coach Stephen Dilly. Coach Dilly teaches PE and health at the high school. He's been here with us since I took over the program in 2008, one of my key assistants. And he has put together, I think, kind of a neat program that we've had the last few years that I'd like him to take a couple minutes to maybe share with his thoughts with you.
Thank you, guys. I want to tell you about a program that we enacted seven years ago when I, I came here and Coach Roman took over the program. I think it's very important that we teach our, our young kids, our student athletes, that it's, it's not just about what they do on the field, it's about representing the community. With being an athlete at Carson High School becomes a tremendous responsibility. We enacted this program called the Junior Senators Program. Every Friday during a home game during the season, they spend an hour in a classroom in an elementary or middle school throughout the district. When I first, when we first started this seven years ago, I think I had four or five teachers get back to me on it. Last couple of years, within 24 hours of the email, it's full and I have to turn teachers away. But basically, our kids go to the classroom, they become mentors, tutors, activity directors, whatever that teacher needs for that hour. And I think it's a tremendous responsibility for these kids and a tremendous way for these kids to realize that it's not just about them, and that's hard for a 15, 16, 17-year-old kid to do, to divvy up their time between school and on the field and what they do off the field. And the Junior Senators Program is just a little way for us to give back to the community. Any questions for me?
Laurel?
I just have a comment on the Junior Senators Program, because I know you came to my son's kindergarten class this last fall.
Oh, awesome.
And he, he was quite impressed with the football players who were in this classroom.
Oh, good. Yeah, thank you.
That's a great program, Coach. Thank you so much for taking that on and you guys supporting it. That's great. Their community is better for it. Any other comments, questions? Go ahead, Ryan.
I'd comment to Coach Roman.
Yes.
I, I know you commented on the Coach of the Year is just kind of encompassing a good season, but I watched a lot of the games, and, and I saw amazing growth from the beginning of the year to the end, and that is a sign of coaching. And also personally, I think what these guys can really take away is, is how you touch people's lives outside of just football. You know, you're, you're one of the voices in my head when, when I come up against walls and I got to break through them, and those lessons are important, and they, and they translate into life. So I think this, that award is extremely deserved, but unfortunately can't encompass everything that you do. So just know, you're an important fixture, and I appreciate all the work you did.
Thank you. Without question, I really appreciate your comment, Ryan. It's very heartfelt, I know. And to be honest with you, Coach Dilly and I, none of the other, we don't do this for the money. We don't do this for the glory. It's definitely a labor of love. We're honestly, the, the relationships that you build with players over time, it just speaks for itself, to be honest with you. It really is about impacting young people, and that's why you get into this, to be honest with you. It's just, it's just a great combination with the education profession, obviously, so. But thank you. Appreciate that 100% Ryan, you know that. Thanks.
Ron?
Okay. Coach, well, let me just talk to you, to your players first. That, that last game, Reed, that was an unbelievable game. And it, well, whatever happened, I was pretty proud of what all you guys did. And Coach, for you as the Coach of the Year, let me just share some things with you, because I got to spend some time with some other community members from other communities in Reno. Not only are you respected and looked upon as a, as just an excellent coach, but you are respected as a human being by the people outside of this community. And I just wanted to share that with you, of the comments that I, you know, that I received. So I hope you just stick around. I know if it's not for the money, I hope you just, you know, just to stick around, but I want to thank you.
I don't think the 49ers are calling, that's for sure.
The Raiders might.
Thank you very much, Ron. Sign me up. Thank you, Ron. I appreciate that. I had a good upbringing, was taught the right way, for sure. Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, guys. We do really enjoy going on Friday nights and watching. It's a positive atmosphere, and I can't believe, out of two of these players, I watched your dad play, your dad's play on these fields. So I'm feeling really old, so. We appreciate it, though. Good luck on your future endeavors.
Thank you.
We'll see you at graduation.
Good job, you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks again for inviting us. Thank you.
Carrying forward, Madam President, just like to remind staff and also parents and students that on Monday, January the 19th, there's no school. That's Martin Luther King Day. And as a reminder to our trustees, the 2014 Contribution Expense Report, as well as the Financial Disclosure Statements for Public Officers are due by midnight, January 15th. You can find that information and the forms, necessary forms, at the Secretary of State's Office webpage. That's www.nvsos.gov. If you have questions, you can call my office. Also like to let you know about some activities of other programs in the school district. We were notified last week that Carson High School Culinary Arts, Penny Reynolds Program, was named to the 2014-2015 Elite 50 by the National Center for Hospitality Studies. This award was given by Sullivan University, and it recognizes an exclusive group of high schools that excel in the areas of culinary arts, baking, and et cetera. The award was presented to Carson High School for their strong enrollment, influence in the community, and national certifications earned by the students, as well as the number of state and national award winners with Pro Start and Skills USA. So our, our folks in the culinary program have brought home more interest and understanding of the great program that we have going on there. I also like to make mention that our Carson High School Jazz Band performed at Governor Sandevall's inauguration on the 5th of January, and that was really exciting. That was fun for us. Just to tell a little story on the governor. When he was first, when he was first elected, he invited his alma mater to come and play, and unfortunately, they weren't able to make it. And so kind of at the last minute, he asked Carson High School to come forward. And so, kind of at the last minute, he asked Carson High School to come forward, and they did, and knocked the socks off everybody. Really played well. And so, again, a great, great performance by our students and by our staff. And then lastly, February the 19th, at 6:00 PM, that's when our next joint session, joint meeting actually, will be with the Board of Supervisors. And so, if you have any ideas for agenda items, if you would either let me or Renee know, we will put that together. And Madam President, that's my report.
Thank you. Moving on to board reports. Jake Jones from Carson High.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Carson High School, as the second semester has begun, many sports and many of our programs have begun to get events going. In student council, we have been planning Winterfest, excuse me, Winterfest, and that's coming up very quickly. That's the week of January 26th through the 31st. The theme this year is winter flicks. Quick rundown of the week. Monday, the 26th, we're going to have a movie night in Senator Square. Tuesday, the 27th, is a Capture the Cure night, so that's going to be AKA Zombie Capture the Flag. Wednesday night will be a diner night. Johnny Rockets, they've done great things for our program, and they're going to donate, I do believe, 10% of the proceeds of that night to the Carson High School class of 2016. Thursday night is ice skating, and there will be a "party tent," quote unquote, just a tent for Carson High School students to go relax, and I think we're going to have food there, I know we're going to have food there, and drinks, and it's just going to be a good time. They're giving all students a discount. It's going to be $5 for skating and for rentals. So that's great of them that they're supporting our high school and our community. The 30th is Stack the Stands for the Boys' Varsity Game at 7:00 PM, along with the crowning for the Winterfest candidates. And Saturday, the 31st, is our dance from 7:00 to 10:00 PM. Decorations are already being made. They look great already, and we're very excited for our last spirit week of the year. For current events, tomorrow, the 14th, there's a wrestling duel at Galena High School at 6:00 PM. Thursday, the 15th, we have a ski race at Alpine Meadows at 9:00 AM. And at 6:30 PM, there's a PTASQ&amp;A session with former students from Carson High School who have moved on to UNR, and they are willing to answer any questions that are thrown their way. So, for students who have any questions regarding anything about college life, they will be willing to answer all of them. So, anything from meal plans to parties to going to classes and, I mean, all the stuff that we need to know about, right? Friday, the 16th, we have JV basketball against Wooster at home at 3:30, Girls' Varsity at 5:15, and Varsity Boys at 7:00. And it's also opening night for Carson High School's drama class production of All My Sons here at the Community Center at 7:00 PM. Admission is $10 for general admission and $5 for students. Saturday, the 17th, All My Sons is performing, is being performed again here at 7:00 PM. Monday, the 19th, is no school. Tuesday, the 20th, Varsity Basketball at Galena, Girls at 5:30, Varsity Boys at 7:00. Wednesday, the 21st, is a ski race at Heavenly at 9:00 AM. And then there's Senior Night for Wrestling at 6:00 PM against Minogue at Carson High School. It's the last match that those seniors will be wrestling in Carson High, and it definitely means a lot for them if you come out and support them. Thursday, the 22nd, All My Sons is performed here at 7:00 PM. And then Friday, the 23rd, Basketball is at home against Minogue, JV at 3:30, Varsity Girls at 5:00, Boys' Varsity at 7:00. And All My Sons is performed here again at 7:00. Saturday, the 24th, SAT at 8:00 AM in the upstairs cafeteria. And All My Sons will have their final two showings, one at 2:00 here at the Community Center, and then one at 7:00. And then Monday, the 26th, is Winterfest, the kickoff of that week. It's also spring sports signups in the library from 5:30 to 6:30 PM. So that's for Boys Golf, Track, and Baseball. And then Tuesday, the 27th, is Basketball at Douglas. JV at 3:30, Girls' Varsity at 5:00, Boys' Varsity at 7:00. Let's pack the Tigers Gym and show them how much we love our Senators and go kick some Tiger booty. Thank you, and that concludes my report for Carson High School.
Thank you, Jake. Moving on to Pioneer High. Kaylee wasn't able to make it tonight, but she wanted to let us know that the student leadership of Pioneer High School would like to announce they are hosting a blood drive on Thursday, January 15th, and invite you all to donate. Just call Connie and she'll set up an appointment. Moving on to board reports. Steve?
Dionne.
Ryan? Laurel?
I do. I do have something from Fritsch. Last week, the 4th and 5th graders were able to go to a field trip to the Sheep Show at the Reno Convention Center. They were able to learn about wildlife conservation, some BB guns, some archery. My 4th grader made a couple fly fishing flies, and I'd like to thank the Wild Sheep Foundation because they paid for the busing and the lunch. Apparently, they usually invite Washoe County Schools, but they were out of school. And I know that several grades, several classes from the middle school went, and the high school also were able to go and learn about wildlife conservation. So I think that was a great opportunity for our students. At Fritsch on Thursday, January 22nd, is an ELL Parent Night beginning at 5:30, and that same night, beginning at 6:00 PM, is a watchdog event. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Joe?
A couple of reports. First, for Carson Middle School. They have a PTA meeting Thursday, the 15th, 3:30 at the CMS Library. Some of their events that are going to be discussing are Chili and Bingo Night and the 8th grade promotion celebration. So they're looking for some 6th, 7th, and 8th grade parents to be involved in the planning of these things. Let's see, there's a CCSD Gate parent meeting on Wednesday, tomorrow, the, no, excuse me, next week, January 21st, 6:00 PM in the library. And all parents of Gate students in the district are welcome to attend. Also, January 22nd, at 7:00 PM, free of charge is the CMS Jazz Band. They're going to be holding a concert at the Community Center. So again, it's free of charge, and if you can make it, they're a fun band to watch. On the high school, talent show auditions. Talent show will be on Thursday, January 29th, from 2:00 to 5:00 in the upstairs, excuse me, that's the auditions, in the upstairs cafeteria. And you can pick up an audition application from Mrs. Golick in room 243 starting yesterday. So those are available. Let's see, I think one more thing. Oh, I just wanted to, well, two things. The swim team, they're having a meeting tomorrow for anybody interested in going out for the high school swim team. So that'll be lunch, lunchtime tomorrow in the library. And then last, I just wanted to send some kudos out to Michael Leiken, who's a senior this year. He's a spotlight. My son and Michael are good friends. Michael's a great kid. He's the president of HOSA. He's been the president, I believe, for the last two years. He's also been involved in varsity sports, track, cross-country. And he has a GPA that I think most people, myself included, would have dreamed they could have had, but he's right up there around a 5.0 student. He's an amazing kid. But anyway, I just wanted to say congratulations to Michael, and it looks like he wants to become a biomedical researcher. So again, I can't even understand this kid, but a good kid. And that's my report.
And that's from an engineer.
Right.
Ron?
Really quickly here, I'd like to recognize Jake. This last Saturday, I was fortunate enough to, you know, to be part of or just watch a JV wrestling tournament, of which Jake coordinated the entire thing, all weight classes, announcements. He kept this thing going very smoothly, and I'm going, wow, this guy, he's done it all. In addition to making these reports, he's doing it. So anyway, Jake, great job.
Thank you, Ron. From Empire, they wanted to congratulate Mrs. Wiggins for being selected as Carson City Rotary Club Teacher of the Month. Mrs. Wiggins is the Empire Math Coach and sponsor of the after-school math program. NASB, we have a board, or a thing coming up on the 23rd, 24th for new board members. And on a different note, it might seem like it shouldn't be an announcement at a Carson High, or a Carson meeting, but UNR Basketball is having a fundraiser, and Matt Williams, who is a former Carson High, is the main speaker, and that's on Friday, the 16th. Plus, we had two, Colby Bloomberg played there last year, and is now in the minors, and now Adam Witz, who graduated from Carson High as part of that program. So if you want to support them, that is a great event. And then just on a board note, I've been appointed by the state superintendent to serve as the board member for the school boards under 10,000 members for the Advisory Council on Parent Involvement and Family Engagement. So that's a three-year commitment. So, anything you guys want to input, let me know. Not sure how they got my name, but they did. So, seeing that, we will move on to the agenda. Moving on to number three, discussion and possible action of election and officers of the Board of Trustees for ensuing year for possible action. So at this time, I would like to open up nominations for President. Steve?
I'd like to nominate Ron Swarzick for President for this current year.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Laurel. Are there any other further nominations? Seeing none.
For all, oh, for President.
For President. We're going to go one by one. I'm going to hold on to this office as long as possible. Just kidding. Okay. Seeing no other nominations, nominations are closed. So we have a nomination for President of Ron Swarzick. Do I make? So, public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of Ron Swarzick as President in 2015?
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations. You are the President, and now you get to take over.
Yeah, just stay right, just stay right there.
I was going to go, Jake's leaving, so I'm going to go sit.
You have to turn your nameplate over or something.
Okay, for the next, we'll entertain nominations for the Vice President.
I would move to nominate Joe Cassioppo for Vice President.
Second.
Further nominations?
Can I have the mic, please? Thank you.
Further nominations? If not, all in favor of Joe as Vice Pres? Public comment? Is there any public comment on, before we take this action? If not, all in favor of Joe being the Vice President? Signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Now for the Clerk.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll make a nomination. I'd like to nominate Laurel Crossman for Clerk for the 2015 Board Year.
Second? I can second now. I can second. I'll second.
Any further nominations? If not, any public comment? Hearing done. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Laurel, congratulations.
Okay, next agenda item.
Agenda item number four, discussion and possible action on designation of a day, place, and time for regular meetings of the Board of Trustees for the 2015 year. This is for possible action.
I move that except as otherwise noted, due to special circumstances, the Carson City School Board of Trustees designate the 2nd and 4th Tuesday of the month as the regular meeting days. 6:00 PM for legally allowed closed sessions, 7:00 PM for open session in the Sierra Room in the Carson City Community Center, 851 East Williams Street, Carson City, Nevada.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Do you like those days? If not, come forward. If not, we'll have a motion on that. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, we go to...
Discussion and possible action on the annual adoption and reaffirmation of existing bylaws and policies of the Board of Trustees.
I move that the Carson City School Board of Trustees approve the adoption and reaffirmation of existing bylaws and policies.
Any public comment before we take an action? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Agenda item number six, discussion and possible action on annual authorization for the Carson City School District to apply for and manage, no, just bear with me, we got to read this. To apply for and manage federal, state, foundation, and private funding, including but not limited to A, Programs Authorized Under Public Law 107-110, the No Child Left Behind Act of 2001, to include Title I, Parts A through H, Title II, Parts A through G, Title III, Parts A and B, Title IV, A and B, Title V, Parts A and B, Title X, Public Law 108-446, the Individuals with Disability Act. We've got the Public Law 109-290, the Carl Perkins Vocational Education Act. We've got the Public Law 104208, the Library Services for Technology Act. We've got the E, Early Childhood Education, comma, full-day kindergarten. F, we've got nutrition, fresh fruits and vegetables. J, Community Development Block Grant. H, Race to the Top Grant. I, At-Risk Counseling Services. J, Career and Technical Education. K, Partnership Carson City Mini Grants in Nevada. Public Agency Insurance Pool. And along with this, a designation of Richard Stokes, Mrs. Susan Kima, and Mrs. Valerie Dockery as the authorized representatives is recommended, and this is for possible action.
Well, I think Ron had the toughest part of this. I'll go ahead and take a crack at the action. Good job, Ron. I move that the Carson City School Board of Trustees designate Mr. Richard Stokes, Mrs. Susan Kima, and Mrs. Valerie Dockery as the authorized representatives for any and all federal and state grants.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments on this motion? If not, all of those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Board appointments for bylaw 050?
Board appointments for bylaw 050. All right, this is appointments to different boards, you know, in addition to the school boards. And you can read here that historically, you know, the board nominates, but this thing is open. What, if any of you have a particular interest or designation, just feel free to jump right in. Okay, let's start with the Director of the Nevada Association of School Boards. I know that Stacy's done a great job, and probably you want to continue.
I can't. I'm now on the executive committee.
She's out. Okay, we're on to the next. Laurel, you were the...
I was the alternate.
Okay.
So I wouldn't expect to do that. I was the alternate, so I could fill in.
Okay. All right, now, the alternate director on the Nevada Association of School Boards. Anyone having it? Steve?
I'd be happy to serve unless someone else would like to.
Now, next one is the member of the Carson City Parks and Recreation Board, and Joe, you were last time?
Yes, I'm enjoying it. I'll stay on it.
Okay. And Steve, you were a member of the Debt Management Commission?
I'm happy to continue my vice.
Okay, then the next is the Partnership Carson City, and, you know, I'm currently a member of that, of Partnership Carson City. You know, I'd like to continue. They do a lot of good things, but if any of you, anyone else has an interest, just feel free to jump in. Okay, if not, I'll just, okay. Legislative liaison. And I know that Dionne is kind of in an awkward position as, you know, Director of the Department of Taxation, probably not a good thing for her to be in there. So anyone else, I know before...
I'm already going to be there because of NASB, so.
And I was, I think I'm alternate, so I'll continue.
I could be an alternate if we...
I could be an alternate if we need...
That's three.
That's good. Yeah, Laurel, Stacy, and Joe.
And not to worry, I'll be calling you all to get down there anyway to testify.
Okay, the next is the Member of the Superintendent's Board Policy Review Committee. And I don't know, before Stacy, were you on that? Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody want to jump in?
I'll do that.
Okay. So we've got Ryan and Stacy.
Okay.
Okay, two of you.
Do you want me to stay on it?
Oh, are you on it? No, let's have Laurel. No, you two. Ryan and Laurel. That'd be good. Okay, a member of the Superintendent's School Naming Committee. Yeah, I mean, that's pretty active.
I'm going to pass this on to Dionne. It is such a time commitment.
Okay, then we've got a member of the Superintendent's Joint Advisory Committee. Now, Richard, what's this all about?
Our contract with the licensed professionals calls for a committee that is made up of a prescribed group of individuals, and it typically is about working conditions within the school district. And we have not been active in that committee for the last several years. It is, however, part of our collective bargaining agreement, and I would suggest that the board appoint a member, a trustee, to serve in that capacity. And that way, that part's done if indeed the parties do come together.
Anyone interested? Representative to the Carson City School Foundation. And I know that the president is the ex-official member, and I like to serve in that capacity, unless anybody else has a burning desire to do this.
I'm probably just going to keep going until February, until kickoff, just because I've been there since the very beginning, just to... So it'll be nice for Ian, because Ian likes to have, doesn't like to have.
Okay, so I...
So there's two other committees.
Well, there's, I know one other, the School Attendance Committee. And Richard, you want to explain a little bit about that?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. There are two additional appointments that we would like to have the board consider. One is for a seat on our Wellness Council. That's a group that's working to create a school district wellness policy after the fashion of the state of Nevada's wellness policy. And so that's an active group that meets right now approximately one time per month. And like I say, the current work of that group is to identify a district policy on wellness, student wellness, which is, again, an important piece of our strategic plan. Then, in addition, we are creating a Student Attendance Review Board, which is aimed at providing due process for students who may be in jeopardy of losing their driver's license or having other sanctions based on their attendance or lack of attendance at school.
And the Wellness Committee's been meeting Mondays, first Monday of every month at five o'clock.
Okay, Wellness Committee. Anyone? Dionne?
Every month, until we get a policy. Well, no, it's every month, because after we get the policy, because it's part of the strategic plan, it'll be less, but it'll still meet, won't it?
There's not necessarily a requirement for us to meet at any particular regular interval, but until we get our policy created, it's right now a monthly meeting.
Okay, Dionne, you've got it. And now the School Attendance Review Committee.
The Student Attendance Review Board is in the process of being developed, but it's likely to be a monthly meeting, too, unless it requires more meeting than what, more times to meet than what we currently know about. So some of that is to be determined, but there's a well-defined recipe, as it were, for creating this board in statute.
Okay, let's just review these real quickly, then entertain a motion. The Director of the Nevada Association of School Boards is Laurel. The alternate director of NASB is Steve. Member of the Carson City Parks and Recreation is Joe. Steve also is a member of the Debt Management Commission. Myself is a member of Partnership Carson City. The Legislative Liaisons, we have three, Laurel, Joe, and Stacy. Ryan as a member of the Superintendent's Board Policy Review Committee. Dionne's got the heavy one as a member of the Superintendent's School Naming Committee. Ryan, a member of the Superintendent's Joint Advisory Committee. Myself as a representative of Carson City Schools, of the Carson City Schools Foundation. We've got Dionne as a member of the Wellness Committee. And Steve as a member of the School Attendance Review Committee.
Were Stacy and I also on the Board, Superintendent's Board Policy Review Committee?
Wait a minute, you...
Yeah.
Which is individual liaisons to schools. Now, what this is, just that, the liaison to the school, but it doesn't mean you can't go to any and all schools. I've had occasion to do that many times. But especially for the new members, if you're a liaison, usually you just keep the rest of us informed of as to what upcoming events are happening. So with that, let's start with French Elementary School. And Laurel, I know before you were there, you would like to stay there?
I still have kids there, and I'm still involved in the PTA, so I'd like to.
Boarderwick Bray?
I'll do that.
Fremont? I could either go to Steve or Dionne. We ought to keep Dionne away from Seelager, that's why.
Yeah, either way, I'm happy to Fremont or Dionne would just do it. Makes no difference.
Don't get too excited there, Dionne. Okay.
So Fremont?
Fremont? Okay. Mark Twain?
I'd like to do that, but nobody else knows.
Okay, Empire?
I'll keep him.
Seelager? The Carson Middle School?
I'll continue with that.
Okay, Joe? And, okay, just Joe, okay.
Well, I'm in the PTA there, too, so whatever.
I play well with others, I'll share.
Okay, Joe and Laurel, you're on it. Okay, Eagle Valley Middle School, I'd like to keep that. I'm there now, and I just kind of enjoy going over there. Carson High School, Joe?
Yeah, I'll stick with that.
And I know I've gone over there and kind of said hello. Okay. Pioneer?
I'll be fine.
Okay, Dionne? The Bray Building, Abbotary Early Childhood Center, Laurel?
I'll be fine with that.
Okay. Okay, any, now, these are all schools, but any, you know, if you have an interest in any other ones, just feel, you know, you can jump right in. But keep in mind, all the schools are open. We just make it a point to visit all of them. Any public comment? Hearing none? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the Carson City School Board of Trustees approve the following appointments, as noted, for the trustees to serve as individual liaisons to the following schools. Laurel to Fritsch, Ryan to Boarderwick Bray, Dionne to Fremont, Ryan to Mark Twain, Stacy to Empire, Steve to Al Seelager, Joe and Laurel to Carson Middle, Ron to Eagle Valley, Joe to Carson High, Dionne to Pioneer Opportunity, and Laurel to Bray Building, Abbotary Early Childhood Center.
I'll entertain a motion for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We all now have our schools. Okay, item, agenda item number... Well, let's go to, let's go to number 11, association reports. Seeing none? Hearing none? Item 12, public comment. And I'll read part of this into the record. Comments may be made by members of the public on any matter within the authority of this board. Please note that public comment will be taken on items marked for possible action before action is taken on such items, and we did that, and members of the public are encouraged to comment on such items at the time they are being considered. Although members of the board may respond to questions and discuss issues raised during public comment, no action may be taken on such matter until a matter is placed on an agenda for action at a meeting of the board. In making public comments, speakers are asked to come to the podium, sign in, speak into the microphone, and identify themselves for the record. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes. If you've got more, you can go beyond. And to not simply repeat comments made by others. This is for discussion only. Any public comment? You're all anxious to get up here, no? Well, seeing none, we'll move right along. Okay, presentation of rebate, this is item, agenda item number 13, presentation of rebate check from Nevada Energy for retrofit of T-12 lamps district-wide. For discussion only, that's Mark Kornick, Charlene Booth, and Andy Drummond.
Mr. President, members of the board standing in for Mr. Kornick, who I believe is attending to a child who got injured this evening, so we hope the best for Mr. Kornick and his family. But we are here with our friends from NV Energy. Always happy to see Charlene Booth and Andy Drummond when they bring big checks. And I am grateful to have them here with us this evening, and so I'm happy to turn the microphone over to Charlene Booth of NV Energy.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes, Mr. President. I am just delighted to be here once again. I am a little bit of a fixture, because I've been here many, many times bringing you checks, thanks to the good work of Mark Kornick and his staff and AJ in support of those efforts. Right now, we are presenting to you a check for $3,652.54, which represents, you guys took advantage of the double rebate that we had at the end of the year by replacing all your T-12s lighting to T-8. So with that, and also rebate earlier in the year, a total of in excess of $5,000 in rebate, but the big savings is over 100,000 kilowatt hours a year is being saved. So, great, great work once again by Carson City School District, and we so appreciate your participation in our Smart Schools program, and we applaud all of your efforts and your work in the community, so thank you.
Well, thank you. Comments from the board? Joe?
I just want to thank NV Energy. I mean, it's a great partnership. I've peripherally worked with Mr. Kornick, and I just want to extend my condolences to him, but also to thank him for all the hard work he's put in to allow the school district to benefit from rebates such as this. So thanks to all of you.
Thank you. And yeah, his heart is really into conserving energy, and those dollars are then spent elsewhere in the school district, so it's a wonderful thing. And I have the actual check, so I'll get to Mr. Stokes, along with the big check.
You guys get up there, hold the check so I can...
Former Madam President and President Swirzick, this would be a great photo op for the two of you to come and stand with our friends from NV Energy.
Do you want it? Where do you want it?
You guys stand right in front of the podium. I can't.
I think you shouldn't. I think you shouldn't. In fact, I can just hold it. Maybe I'll fix it right here.
Right here? Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Good to see you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. We host you, we are.
B, C, D, J, and K as submitted.
Second.
There's no way left for comment? We have one person. It's up to you. Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Joe, this is your responsibility.
I'm going to have to do that, huh? I'm just going to have to bring the big hammer.
Yeah, just put that on. Okay, it's requests for future agenda items or topics. And for members of the, the new members of the board, you know, our primary responsibility here is student achievement and success. And if you've got anything at all that you want to have discussed or put on the agenda for discussion, please do it. And while it goes for any of the board members, it's an important item for us to keep current and keep moving in a good direction. So at this time, is there any future agenda topics you'd like on the agenda at this time? Okay, it's on every, you know, every agenda, so we'll have plenty of opportunities. Okay, seeing none? Last item is, is it German? So, oh, Steve?
No, no, I don't.
Okay.
Just make a quick announcement. I forgot to mention it when I was talking about Carson High, but I apologize, because now there's hardly anybody to speak to. But I had a chance to go to Culinary's. They do, the Culinary Three students do a soup and salad bar. I think it's once a week, every Friday, and I attended my first one last week. It's amazing. I mean, Penny Reynolds does a great job, but the students are fantastic. I attended, and they had a, it was a butternut squash soup with three different types of salad, one being a pasta salad, rosemary bread, squash cookies, some other things, beverages, all for the bargain price of $6. And if you haven't attended it, it was fantastic. So anybody who's hungry on a Friday, I think it runs most Fridays, but check into it. It's well worth attending.
Okay, good. Any other board comments? If not, we're out of here.